I got six.
Okay. All right, if you guys have a cell phone, please silence after you turn it off. The public hearing before the Sawyer County Court of Appeals is hereby called order at 6:00 PM, August, excuse me, October 19th, 2021, in the Sawyer County Courthouse in Hayward, Wisconsin. Present on behalf of the board, Al Gerber, Laura Russ, Mark Olson, Ed Obelis, and Steve Kelsey, present on behalf of the zoning office, Jay and Pat. Those persons who are going to get pertinent testimony will be afforded the opportunity to do so. As recognized by the chairman, that person will clearly state their full name before giving testimony. Each hearing will follow this order, reading of application, submission of the file to the board, applicant's statements and presentation of evidence, testimony of those in support of the application, statements from persons and objections to the application, rebuttal less permitted by the board and decision by the board. Orderly procedure requires that each side shall proceed without interruption by the other. All testimony will be addressed to the board and there will be no questions or arguments between individuals. Any persons agree by decision, the board may appeal the decision to the circuit court within 30 days of the date following the board's decision letter. The day following the signing of the board's decision letter is the first day of the 30-day appeal filing period. This public hearing has been published as a class two notice in accordance with Chapter 985 Wisconsin statutes and Sawyer County Record and Sawyer County Gazette. The hearing will follow this order, variance applications, new business and adjournment. Okay, is there a motion? Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes of the August 17th meeting?
Yes.
Okay, any questions or adjustments?
No.
Is there a movement or a motion to approve those minutes?
To make a motion to approve the minutes.
And I'll second it, motion to be made and seconded to approve the minutes. All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries by vote of five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have one variance application this evening. This is a public hearing in the town of Hayward, variance number 21-007. Owner Patrick Costello and Catherine Julie, Round Lake, Part Lot 8, Section 23, Township 41 North Range, 8 West, Parcel 010171000802, which is 2.22 total acres, Zone Residential-Recreational 1. Application is requested for the relocation of an existing 34 and a half by 35 and a half foot cabin, 16 feet further back from the water. The existing cabin is currently 31 feet to the ordinary high watermark of Round Lake. With the relocation 16 feet further back, the applicants are requesting to add a 12-foot by 34 and a half foot deck. The deck would be located at 35 feet to the ordinary high watermark. With relocation of the cabin, it would be proposed that the area outside of the existing footprint would total 295 square feet of an area inside of 75 feet from the water, which is only a seven and a half foot by seven foot area would be the only addition added. The remaining portion of that would just be sliding the house back into a non-existing footprint. There are two portions of the Sawyer County zoning shoreline wetland protection ordinance that may be applied, which would require the prior granting of a variance. Section 11.3 would be for lateral expansion resulting in 294 feet, which 200 square feet would be allowed, resulting in an additional 94 square foot addition as part of the variance, or Section 6.1 for any new structures located closer than 75 feet to the ordinary high watermark. As part of the staff report, again, this is a relocation of an existing structure, moving it further back from the water. They'd be enclosing a seven foot by seven and a half foot area on the back of it, and then adding the deck size of 12 foot by 34 and a half feet. As part of my other onsite notes, I was onsite on 8/28 of 21 to view the site and also had several discussions with the applicant. There are several long-term possibilities on this lot. The applicant could tear down the existing cabin and build all new back at 75 feet, with relocating back to 75 feet, a large number of existing trees in the drained field would most likely need to be removed or relocated. With removal of those items, a very large footprint would be buildable on this lot. The applicant could replace within the existing footprint and vertically expand within the existing footprint. Vertical expansion could be up or down, and the applicant was interested in doing a tear down and rebuild with the creation of a walkout, but with the slope thresholds and the proximity to the water, this would not be allowed for additional earth disturbance within 35 feet of the ordinary high watermark for the walkout creation. Option number three is with removal of four feet, four feet off the front of the existing cabin. That cabin would now be located at 35 feet to the ordinary high watermark. With an existing structure at 35 feet, an individual is allowed a 200 square foot expansion of the existing footprint, no closer to the water, for an area that's inside of 75 feet from the water. Once you're beyond 75 feet, the footprint could be expanded even further. The applicant could do this and create a 200 square foot expansion to get beyond 75 feet and then further expand from there. The last possibility, and ultimately the one that the applicant is requesting the variance for, is to utilize the existing cabin but to relocate it back an additional 16 feet further from the water. Put a solid foundation basement under the structure, square off the back seven foot by seven and a half foot corner, and add a 12-foot by 34-foot deck across the front. With this scenario, by moving the cabin back further, the space in which the cabin would occupy that is not within the existing footprint would be larger than the 200 square feet. A portion of the cabin would be beyond 75 feet, but again, the footprint area inside of 75, including the squared off portion, would be larger than 200 square feet. Please note that the BOA does have the ability in granting a variance to limit height and future expansion without additional or with additional variances being requested. As by motion of the town, action was approved with amendments. Signed Gary Gettart, Chairman, Henry Bearhart Supervisor, Andrea Whitworth Supervisor. Approved only without the 12-by-35-foot deck on the front of the structure. Resource protection is the overall goal of the comp plan, as seen on page 34 of the Town of Hayward's comprehensive plan, signed Bryn Hand, Town Clerk. There were 23 opinion letters sent out, eight were returned, one with objections, seven with no objections. I have no objections to this. Schwern, Schwensker, Schwernerwerk, Family Trust. I have no objections to this. Brian Fuller and Marla Fuller, I have no objections to this. James Nancekaville, I have no objections to this. Victoria Gainor, I have no objections to this. Ronald Seemers, I have no objections. Donna Wolfrey Trust, I have objections. The cabin should be 75 feet back from the ordinary high watermark. The lot is plenty deep to put the cabin back where it should be placed. Byron Miller, I have no objection to this. Carolyn Coulson, that is all.
Okay. Are the applicants here or is there someone here to speak on their behalf? Please step to the microphone and identify yourself.
I appreciate a few minutes of your time this evening.
Your name, sir?
My name is Patrick Costello. So I'm the applicant. My wife and I bought the property. The discussion at the town planning department meeting and also the town council focused on the on the deck. And, you know, for purposes of our discussion, the reason that I'm, you know, the hardship and the reason I'm requesting the variance is the fact that the cabin sits right up close to that bank. A few of you I know are out there, hopefully, you know, the majority of you are out there, but if you if you look at the cabin on the front side, on the lakeside, you'll see that there's about three feet before the the bank drops off. And so our intention is to make the cabin four season and to winterize it. And to do so, we have to put a foundation under it. And so obviously, that close to the bank and that close to these large legacy trees, we are going to lose those trees and obviously, our concern is we'll lose that bank. I know that in the discussion, you know, I've talked with Jay and we've discussed how we could potentially move the cabin further back with building a deck. But for for the purposes of this discussion, the focus can be simply about moving the cabin back four feet. I'll work with them in terms of our 200 square foot expansion. If we can add a deck and slide the cabin back further, we will to be further away from the bank. But by requesting a variance to at least slide that cabin back that four feet, that gives me the ability to put a foundation without destroying the the bank and losing the vegetation there at the bank.
So you indicated that the deck is not to be part of this variance. When we talked, you said the deck is not, it's off the table. If if that is a if that is a determining factor, that is off the table. And then I had asked about where, what would be your plans then for your allowed 200?
Yes, and so obviously, within the, I'm not looking for a variance to add anything to the property. You know, I'm not looking to use this as a benefit. The reason I'm here for the variance is that if we build that close, I'm concerned about the trees and the bank. And so within the context of our discussion, Jay and I talked about utilizing that 200 square foot expansion to create an area behind the cabin. So what it would do, it would afford us the ability to actually slide the cabin even further away from the lake. And then if we were to do that, then that deck would just be basically an additional buffer to the lake. So instead of the foundation being four feet farther back from where it sits right now, it would literally be 16 feet further back. So if I can work with the the planning and zoning department and we can shift the cabin further back, we will. But by having a variance to be able to build four feet back, that gives us the ability to put the foundation in to not lose the trees and not lose the bank. And so that's the critical component of of this for me is the variance to approve moving the cabin back four feet. I'll work with the planning department, Jay, and if we can make that 200 square feet work to slide the cabin further back and put a deck on the front, we will. But I want to at least make sure that if we're going to winterize this and make it a four-season cabin, that we we don't destroy the bank.
So what am I missing then? Because you don't need a variance to move the cabin back four feet.
So I, so for instance, if I chose to move the cabin back, let's say I give up two feet at the lakeside, unfortunately, I don't get to put that two feet back on the back of the cabin. So if I give up two feet from the existing footprint where the cabin sits, I literally cannot rebuild that existing cabin because the footprint I'm left with is in two feet smaller. So it's kind of unusual. You would sort of assume that there wouldn't be any variance required to actually slide a cabin further back from the lake. But if I vacate that existing footprint, you know, I can retain what's left of the footprint if I vacate part of it. Or if there's no cabin there on the on the parcel, if you were building new construction now, you would be required to build 75 feet back.
If you move it back three feet, it's three feet by 34 and a half feet. It is how much square footage?
100.
Okay, so it's 100 feet, you get 200 feet. So you can take 100 of your 200 allowed to build the same size cabin.
Would you be looking at squaring that corner still?
I'm sorry?
Would you be looking at squaring that corner?
So me utilizing this is this existing cabin, if we slide it back, the the variance would allow me to connect back to that 75-foot mark. And so it would, this wouldn't give me the, Jay had actually drawn the square corner at the back of the cabin in the footprint. And so basically, that's the only area, there would be no expansion laterally or towards the lake, it would literally be straight back behind the cabin.
Right, but I guess I'll ask Jay. We we've seen this on other stuff where he's going to lose, just for keeping it simple, 100 feet out of his existing footprint if he moves back to 35 feet. He gets 200 feet free, so he can add 100 feet back on to get to the same size and still have 100 extra feet, which would also incorporate, would that allow him to square off? But you're you're basically losing 100 feet of the 200 feet to build the same size cabin.
100, so at 35 by four feet across the front would be approximately 130 or 140 square feet. Right, so basically, for voluntarily sliding the cabin back, I'm basically would be penalized, would give up part of that expansion, square footage. And so if I'm voluntarily sliding the cabin back away from the lake, what I'm looking for is to not be penalized in terms of what if I was at 35 feet back and could expand behind from there. So ultimately, that square footage at the front, I'm just, I'm asking not to give that up but to slide the cabin back four feet.
Okay, I got what you're asking for, okay.
I just have one follow-up question, make sure I'm understanding this as well so I can kind of get some of the math here. Are you wanting to get to the point of 75 though? Because you're seven feet short of 75, so if you move back four feet, you're still three feet short of 75.
Correct, and then we, so if we would utilize the 200 square feet to make up that three feet and then that seven by seven and a half square knockout at the back corner, that would afford us the ability to close that three-foot gap at the back of the cabin.
So in essence, then, you're looking for a seven and a half by seven-foot expansion plus an additional three by 34 and a half foot addition to get you beyond 75. That would include, that would encompass that area. And by shifting it the four feet further back, you don't get to to double dip on that. You're moving it four feet back to get beyond 35. And that's really what the variance, I guess, is now requested for is that, you know, he's going beyond the 200 square feet that would be allowed. So there'd be a three by 34 and a half, which is 103 square feet, plus 52 and a half, yeah. It wouldn't even need a variance.
He doesn't need a variance.
I'm under 200, yeah, I'm under 200 square feet, I wouldn't. The variance is basically to request sliding four feet away from the lake. I don't want to, I don't want a special treatment from the county. I'm not looking to be able to expand and put decks where other people haven't been able to. I just need the ability to slide the cabin further away from the lake so I don't lose that bank. In doing so, I'll expand further behind the cabin, but that's within my, the 200 square feet allowed expansion will give me the ability to actually slide the cabin further back.
Right, so you can rebuild in your same footprint, four feet further back and square up the cabin without a variance.
Well, I think he actually still needs a variance because, because when you slide it four feet back, that area that you're sliding the four feet further back is included as part of the 200. Then from there, he still needs to square off the seven and a half by seven area and an additional three by 34 and a half to get to the point of 75. So I would have a total then of six, 264 square feet would be his footprint expansion by sliding this four feet back and basically doing that addition. Oops.
But I'm not looking forward to to do any expansion from where the cabin sits forward. We're literally vacating four feet and then expanding from there back.
Understand.
So that area as indicated there is 264 square feet. So the cabin will get slid back the four feet, but that L that's created, I wish I could, can you see my mouse on here?
Yeah.
On the screen? Yeah, this L that's created right here would be an area outside of the existing footprint that would total 264 square feet. So would still require a variance. That 200 of it would be allowed and 64 square feet would be outside of the 200 allowed.
But now, this has been published one way and noticed to not hit the same way and now it's changing. I mean, it's still kind of within the same framework of what we were talking about.
Yeah, it's still in the same framework. You know, he's deleted the deck off of it and instead of moving 16 feet further back on the cabin, he'd be moving four feet further back on the cabin.
So that's your position, sir?
Yes, sir, my concern.
Excuse me, the 12-foot deck is no longer a consideration.
No, if if we're allowed to build a deck within the constraints of of the rules, what I, the discussion was based on a variance request for a deck at at the last two meetings. And and what I was trying to clarify was that I'm not asking for a variance to actually build a deck. We're asking for a variance, yes, to slide the cabin back that four feet. Then within that existing footprint, if we can create a deck and slide further back, we will. But what what the, one of the people on the town board said that his concern was is that, he said, I own a lake house out on Round Lake and I wanted to build a, expand my cabin forward and put a deck on it, but I wasn't allowed. And so I don't think that you should be allowed to expand your cabin and and put a deck on it. And what I was clarifying for him was that I'm not looking to expand forward. We're vacating our footprint and and backing up and then utilizing the additional square foot to back the cabin up and build from behind us, not forward. And so the discussion got focused around the deck and that somehow that was a benefit to us. By by sliding the cabin back further, that he said, well, you don't have a deck on the cabin now, but you will have a deck on the cabin. But what we're proposing is that that footprint of that deck sits back in, further back than where the front of the cabin now sits, and our expansion is all backwards within that 200 square foot of expansion space, back to our 75-foot line. And so for the purposes of putting in the foundation, if we can't add a deck and and I can just slide it back four feet and we we put the foundation there, we will. If I can work within the constraints of what the county regulations are and we can expand backwards and and add a deck, I would like to do that if possible, but that's not a deal breaker for me. I'm just trying to basically make this cabin a four seasons cabin, winterize it, put a foundation under it, and do that within the constraints of the site-specific limitations that are posing some concerns. Originally, when I talked with Jay, I wanted to just put a walkout basement and he said, I really have to protect that bank. And so our focus in our discussion is how we modernize this cabin without losing some of those signature trees and then that steep bank at the front.
What type of foundation are you considering?
Poured foundation.
Full basement?
Yes, yes, sir.
So you're going to, what, you're going to jack up the cabin and?
Yeah, so I got a bid from one company, but they actually, they pick buildings up and move them. So they're going to actually crib it, they're going to pick it up and crib it, and then we'll put the foundation in and then they'll put the cabin back on top of the foundation. So there's a company called Mitchell Movers out of Chippewa Falls that I have a price from to do that.
And they can jockey around between trees and?
See, he says they can pick it up and crib it. Yeah, so obviously, if we're going to cut trees on the property, it's going to be from where the cabin is back, not from where the cabin is forward.
Then also following the logic, based on Jay's staff report, excuse me, and you're going to be at 75 feet back, which then in the future potentially could allow you to expand even further, would you have an issue with us limiting you to no more variances?
Well, obviously, I don't know, you know, in the long run, what our goals would be or, you know, a garage is one thing I could see potentially wanting to add in the future, but I don't know that I'll ever be in a position that I want to do that.
You've got a four-car garage right now.
Well, yeah, there's a big pole building there, yeah. So, you know, potentially, I would would like to add a garage. I don't know, I don't have a plan for that now and I don't know that it's something that I would ever do.
Well, a garage, as long as it's back beyond 75 feet and you're, you know, off your lot lines, wouldn't be an issue. I'm just talking a variance for the dwelling that if we limit it to this is it.
Yeah, I I wouldn't be asking, so are you asking me if I would foresee coming to you for further variance requests to expand the cabin further in different ways or?
Yeah, because legally, if we if we allowed that to get you back and granted a variance based on what we just discussed, without coming for a variance, you're going to be able to add on to that house, right? Landlord, beyond 75 feet.
Yeah, unless you make it a condition.
Right, that's what I'm asking, would you have a problem with that condition?
But so like, right now, I would be, if I vacate the four feet of, at the front of the cabin voluntarily and don't get to collect that area back, and then I use my 200 square feet, theoretically, I could use that existing footprint from the cabin now, expand back to 75 feet and build, like Jay mentioned earlier, as large as we wanted to. But the reason that we're going through this variance request is that I can't make that existing cabin work with any variation in footprint. So if I didn't, if if this request was not before you guys today and I was just looking to build a big home, all I have to do is vacate that four feet, I can expand back to the 75-foot mark and I literally could build as large of a house as I wanted to. So I don't know that in terms of capping the value, in terms of potential future improvements, I don't know that I would want to voluntarily say that we'll never look to expand in the future or other potential owners wouldn't. I don't know that I want to.
Yep, no, I understand what you're saying.
Cap the value of our investment there.
But if you decided to change something, just to finish the story, I understand what you're saying that, you know, if you decided in the future to build a huge house, all you got to do is go back 75 feet, it doesn't require a variance or anything. So this is just dealing with with the existing footprint and the existing structure. But I understand what you're saying, it does limit you. That's the, that's the point, when you get in, although the 35 feet is even stricter and then that 35 to 75 is is pretty strict and, you know, you're already getting free expansion. And actually, if I recall Jay's numbers correctly, without squaring off that building, you can build the exact same footprint four feet further back with that 200 feet without squaring it off. So without a variance, if you wanted to do that.
And I've kind of reading through some of the shoreline zoning ordinances here as to what can be done when a structure is authorized by a variance. And that structure can be vertically expanded. So even if you were to approve the variance tonight and you were to say that if you're moot on vertical expansion, the ordinance would dictate that he can vertically expand. In that same realm, it would be my understanding that if you made it a condition that he would need to apply for another variance for expansion beyond 75 feet, you would have to make that a condition, because if it was moot, now you're meeting the shoreline setback of 75 feet and could then further expand on from that. And that's, not to, you know, speak for the applicant, but that is some of the, you know, reasoning as to why to get to the 75-foot line is to have options available in the future, whether it's for him or whether it's for a new owner.
So we would, we wouldn't necessarily need to restrict them from doing it?
No.
We could require that another application?
You have the option.
Another variance be applied for?
Yeah, if you don't put it as towards a motion that it requires additional variances for either vertical and or expansion beyond 75, if you don't make those motions, then it would not need a variance to do so.
Right.
If this board wants to see additional variances for something like that, they certainly could. You know, just to give you, you know, understanding where, you know, if this structure was physically four feet further back from the water, we wouldn't be here tonight. We could get beyond the 75 feet and then once he's beyond 75, he could further expand. We have dozens of those every year that do those same situations.
Any other questions to the applicant? Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak on behalf of the application? Hearing none? Is there anyone speaking opposition of the application? Hearing none? All right, discussion by the board.
Well, even with the change on what he's looking to do, it still kind of follows kind of his original synopsis he put out there. But looking at the three-step tests, I don't see that there's any unique conditions on this property. I mean, you go either direction and the shoreline's all the same, so the bank doesn't make it unique. And I couldn't get past, I couldn't get past that. I did, but that's the first thing that struck out with me and I don't see with what he proposed tonight, it changes that for for having to pass that condition. I don't know if anyone else had thoughts on that one.
Well, I visited the site today and I saw a ton of buildable area where compliance structure could easily hit the existing ordinance. And and I noted that there would be some trees lost, but that was the only negative thing that that I noted and new trees get planted every day, so it wasn't that big. And new trees get planted every day, so it wasn't that big a negative for me.
No, and I agree with you on that. I had that listed under the unnecessary hardship that he's got three other options available that don't even require a variance and, you know, as we've done in the past, that, you know, this is a minimum relief and when you got, you know, the option in the spot he's in, he can go up or down or both, then he can also cut off four feet and use part of his 200 feet to replace that in the backend. As Jay had in his notes, like we discussed, and he can go back 75 feet and build whatever he wants within his side yard and rear lot setbacks. So I can't find a hardship either. And, you know, when we're that close to the lake, that under 75 feet, adding any more impervious surface, which we would be adding here, you know, is going to kind of go against, you know, the intent of the ordinance on preventing runoff. And there's reasons why they put in, you know, the 200 feet, given it kind of your, we're giving you this just because it's existing and it's there and we're allowing you to do some other options. But then in the same breath, they also gave you the option to go up. So I can't, I can't get it to pass any of the three-step tests myself.
Any additional comments? Is there a motion to either approve or deny the amended request?
Well, I'd make the motion to deny.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? I'll second the motion. Okay, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion to deny the request, if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
All post same sign? But the record reflected the motion to deny passed by a vote of five to zero.
Reasons?
Pardon?
I'll give my reasons, even though I kind of stated them already. As far as the three-step tests were required to go through, the first one, due to conditions unique to the property, no, it's not a unique property, property is similar to other adjacent properties in the area. The shoreline bank is not unique to this property. There are compliant areas to build, as noted in Snyder versus Waukesha County's zoning board of adjustment, practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship do not include conditions personal to the owner of the land, but rather to the conditions especially affecting the lot, unnecessary hardship. Again, in Snyder, be Waukesha County zoning board of adjustment, circumstances of applicants such as growing family or desire for a larger garage are not a factor in deciding variance. Variants should provide minimum relief to satisfy hardship. And this variance requested would be for the convenience of the owner as numerous other compliant options are available to the applicant. The applicant's desire for the deck or the additional square footage, as adjusted tonight, if he moved it back, is not a minimum relief when there's three other options available. So it'd be for the convenience of the owner and no harm to public interest. There would be harm to the public interest. The property has numerous other feasible buildable areas which do not require variance and would not impact the public interest negatively. The purpose and intent of the Sawyer County zoning shoreline wetland protection ordinance is for promoting the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare and protect the public trust in habitable waters. If approved, this variance would not, as stated in 1.31 per N4, further the maintenance of safe and healthful conditions and prevent and control water pollution through limiting impervious surfaces to control runoff which carries pollutants. The variance, as requested, would add impervious surface and with the land and the slope leading directly to the water. And options are available to the applicant, which would not increase the impervious surface runoff.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to new business. Let me go back up here. So we're looking at approval for the 2022 meeting dates. Kathy should have included a packet in there for you. So we always look at the November deer season. That is on the, the 15th would be the third Tuesday. Gun deer season won't start until the 19th. So I don't think there'd be too many objections with keeping that date, unless you guys want to move it. The only other one of concern is the third Tuesday of April, April 19th. County Board generally switches their April date to the Tuesday for those that have other conflicts on that day or want to just switch things up. If county board is held on the 19th, we're either going to be in the assembly room, which so be it. But I might be inexposed being at that meeting or the Board of Appeals. So there's a little bit of conflict for me, it would be the only reason.
Would you prefer the, the earlier or the later? I'd prefer the later, I would suppose, with town meetings.
Just to move it to the 26th, it's fine for me.
I don't have a problem with that.
Works for me. Go with that, Steve?
No, it's not.
So I would need a motion to approve the dates with the change of the April meeting to be the fourth Tuesday, which would be the 26th.
I would make that motion.
A motion made in secret to both the calendar as presented except for the April meeting, which would be the 26th. All those in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Mark, could you make that motion?
Yeah. And Laura's second. Second item for new business, we are looking at having amended fees to our variance applications. Right now, they're $500 for variance application, $500 for zoning committee appeal or administrative appeal. These variance cases and/or appeals cases are not getting any easier. They're becoming more complex as every year goes by. And there's no nice, easy, we carved out the nice, easy ones. Oh, you have a garage that you want to build and you're a little bit too close to a road. We carve those out to not see those because they were getting approved all the time. So the variances that we see now are a whole new animal than what we've experienced and seen in the past. And with that, I've had conversations with the county administrator and he and I both thought it would be wise of us to have some type of legal counsel present at Board of Appeals meetings. That is why we are proposing an increase to the variance fee amounts as well as administrative appeal and zoning committee appeal amounts to raise those from $500 to $800 to cover legal counsel cost. TJ Duffy said that he would be willing to be counsel for the Board of Adjustments, Board of Appeals. Whether or not that needs a motion from you or not, basically the county administrator said that's what we're going to do. But I still wanted to, you know, discuss it with you folks to see if you guys had any questions or problems or issues with that. I'd been told, I've only been here 12 years. I don't necessarily recommend, or I don't recollect legal counsel being here, but an individual told me that around 20 years ago that there was legal counsel present for a while. Is that true or?
I don't think I've been on the board for 20 years. I don't recall the, we having a lawyer here regularly.
Right. And we've always had lawyers present when it is an appeal case and just that that's a whole different animal. So we wanted to, it started off with just adjusting fees for an appeals process because if we're having an attorney present, we're losing a lot of money in our zoning budget to hire out that attorney to pay the stipends for the board individuals, the time and staff and publications that are needed to present cases. So we were looking at just increasing the appeals process and that is where Tom Hoff, the county administrator, thought it'd be a good idea to have legal counsel present at all of them. So again, TJ Duffy would be kind of this option A. If he was not available or had a conflict, we would be looking at John Carlson for option B. If John Carlson was unavailable, option C, I haven't gotten that far, but I was going to ask Mike Kelsey, but that might have some other conflicts here with board members as well, so.
Well, after just being on the Zoom with the Board of Appeals training, she made the point of bringing that up, that there's just as many that don't have counsel as those that do have counsel and they only bring counsel in when it's, like you said, an appeal or something that's got the whole, the whole county up in arms. So she was kind of indifferent on having one or not having one. So, but it sounds like it's, I guess, I don't know. Like you said, they are getting more and more, I mean, you're down to the bottom of the barrel on stuff people can do. There's no 75 by, or 100 by 200-foot lots out there anymore, lakes. So you are getting these where they're coming up with ingenious ways, but.
This one's going into effect until January 1st anyways, just to let you know that.
And I guess my point would be, as long as they're there for just guidance or questions, not running the meetings.
That is my concern.
Right, and this isn't written in stone. It was just what the county administrator had suggested. If there are, you know, concerns with having legal counsel present, we can, you know, bring those concerns to Mr. Hoff.
Well, a couple of different things. It isn't that difficult, you know, like tonight was a good example. Between the knowledge of the way the ordinance is written and with the administrator here, you, Jay, you're able to explain options to that guy that he might not have come to light. And unless we bring in a lawyer at every meeting that's an expert on zoning and ordinances, I don't know that that individual, and that's, I'm not being derogatory, is going to bring that area expertise to the meeting with them. Because Carlson seems pretty sharp about zoning matters and so does TJ Duffy. But, you know, we're bringing in a pro and I don't know that we always need a pro. The other thing, 800 bucks is a lot of money. 500, when we went from three to five, I thought we took a pretty big leap. And to go, you know, this guy, tonight, just using him as an example, because he's the last one, last one here, an extra $300 didn't, wouldn't have gained him anything.
Right.
We would have still come up with the same decision. But maybe there's a reverse side to that coin too. Maybe we'll see less variances if it does cost 800 bucks to move the cabin back four feet or whatever.
No, I kind of agree with Alan on that point, that most of the stuff, the zoning is in the weeds on, and to get the answers out of them. I mean, I'm guessing the main reason that they might be looking at doing it is to make sure we do the three-step test, which, you know, some of them gets done depending on motions made and how it's made. And sometimes some stuff gets missed, but if that's, if that's the point. I mean, I remember our old administrator sat at meetings, zoning committee and everything else and kind of told them, no, you can't do that, no, you can do this, no, you can't do that, you better think about this. I mean, if that's all we're looking for, we can just tell Jay to be more aggressive. Or V or L or somebody, but, I mean, if it's following the three-step test, that isn't rocket science.
Right, it's some of those really legal questions. I mean, for example, again, here tonight, you know, this individual kind of changed his application after it was published. If you would have approved the application, I think someone would have good grounds to say you can't approve that because that's not what was published.
Yep, no, that's why I brought it up and.
No, I don't know those ins and outs and that's where an attorney may know those.
But I could also argue that it wasn't a material point because whether you have a deck or not, you're still moving back the four feet as the original application. He's just saying, take the deck off and the house is going to be great.
But something similar to that, where someone changes their tune.
And I think we've all bent down that road on all these cases that we've been on. If it's a material issue, we know we can't, we can't do it. So, but, I mean, that's just my opinion on it, that if, I mean, if the person's just here to make sure we follow a three-step test, I think Jake can say, you guys, just like the old administrator did years ago when I first started in this, you know, you guys, you got to look at this and you got to do that. And, I mean, before Jay took over, we had one where it got sent back from our local judge and he told us what to do and the board still didn't do it, so he overrode the board.
Yeah.
I mean, Waldo sat and gave reasons of what he thought the judge wanted, no harm to public interest. And I remember, I was an alternate in the audience, but, no, the ambulance can still get down the road even with the variance and that wasn't what the judge was looking for. So along those lines, I mean, it just got all messed up with the way the judge did it and stuff. But, I mean, if that's what we're looking for or not, I guess I don't know, but.
So it is just a discussion item here tonight. It's not written in stone yet, so I guess take the month and mull it over. I'll bring it back on new business in November. And if we don't want to move forward with having legal representation at every Board of Appeals hearing, then I would probably want something in writing from the chairman so I can present it to Hoff and say, Board of Appeals doesn't want this.
Yeah, that and.
And I don't know if he can just say, well, too bad you're getting it anyways or?
I'm sure he can.
Shouldn't we be able to say, you know?
We want it.
If we feel this looks like there could be problems.
Right, and that's hard to anticipate though, to which ones will have problems and which ones not. Yeah, to an extent, I agree.
It's a small community.
Yeah.
And that's my, I might as well just spit it out. That's my concern with having TJ be our continual legal representative for the board. I understand it when it's an administrative appeal, but I don't, to me, it makes it look like it's already a done deal. There's Jay and then there's TJ by his side. And it kind of says, well, all right, you'll raise a particular question about something and TJ will chime in, but no, I don't, I don't think you should do that or, no. And he's vocal when he is represented, he doesn't.
So is it a matter of who's?
Let's not go personal.
That's all of them.
True, but like we said, John Carlson seemed.
Well, he took over the meeting, he did.
Right, so I mean.
I didn't like it.
And TJ was just chosen in this that he does other matters for Sawyer County still. He's no longer, well, he is still technically corporation counsel and that he does matters for like childcare and for citations, but he doesn't do stuff for other committee meetings. We have a separate legal representation by Rebecca Roker now. So TJ was chosen and just that he still does work technically for the county. Now, if there's another individual legal representation that this board would rather see, I mean, that's a much easier conversation to have with Tom as opposed to they don't want legal representation at all, unless there's a contentious case, right?
I have one more question. Who, who sets and approves fees?
Ultimately, me, to set the fees with justification.
750 or?
Right, I'd. I'd asked TJ as to what he would end up charging the county for rates. And he said it'd be roughly a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And there would be a half hour of prep work, an hour of the meeting and a half hour post work. So roughly two hours worth of work at a hundred and fifty dollars an hour, so that's where a new additional three hundred dollars is calculated. And that we can set.
County board doesn't need to approve that?
It's actually approved by zoning committee going to county board as part of the overall budget. I don't think the line item that out because it's within the entire budget package. And ultimately, I'm not gonna make that much more money. I I mean, what variance number was this? Seven? Seven times three and an extra twenty one hundred dollars. It doesn't hurt or break my budget, but what does ultimately hurt my budget is if we have large appeal case. And there's attorneys on multiple sides or, you know, there is a contentious case and we have to hire an attorney. We are losing quite a bit of money on variances. Bayfield County charges a thousand dollars right now for variance cases, and they do have legal counsel president at all of them. Not saying that we're Bayfield County, but just to give you a.
I'll just make my main point is, I mean, you guys are gonna decide. That's why we have an administrator, but. I guess I can live with it. I don't. Like, like you say, I think every one of these is unique and I I don't know about the rest of you, but I put in. Hours and hours and hours on these, looking at everything that, not to say I'm a lawyer, but for somebody to. I mean. I have no issue going against what a lawyer is telling me that's here as a representative of, I think I'm right. But as long, like I said, just taking over the meeting and and say, nope, all right, I got that. Okay, it's passed state law and move on and going, that ain't gonna fly, so, but that's that's just my.
Oh, before you get into that, this that was laying on the table for the Blueberry Lake, that's that's November.
And then we'll probably have some in December.
November what?
Yeah, we changed it for the big shoe sale.
Mall of America.
Did we? Third Tuesday would be the sixteenth. That sounds right. Yeah, because Gun Deer would be the twentieth. So I have two other items for new business that I didn't put on the agenda. I was able to find this conclusion of law form that we had on our files. You know how you say at the beginning of meeting that, you know, the decision by the board. That you file this order proceeding and that the the first day of the signing of the board's decision letter starts the thirty day appeal filing process. So generally Kathy is just kind of typed up minutes and typed up a letter and then we send that out to the individuals. That's the decision. But I think it might be advantageous to kind of have the chairman. At least go through some of this requirements or whether it's, you know, whatever individual is making the motion. To to kind of write through some of their kind of facts as to what the unnecessary hardship is. What is the physical limitation? Is it contrary to public interest? And then, you know, if there's any other unique conditions that are put on it, and that way you can sign it right here today. Then we have an official piece of paper in the file that says, this is the sign of the decision letter.
I've never seen the decision letter.
Right, I found it in our. Maybe it's a good idea to to use those because.
All right, so who wants to be chairman next year?
Oh, I've already made myself.
I don't need it for tonight. I just wanted to bring it up. I thought it was a nicer working document. I don't think we need a lot of information and I could even fill out this stuff as we're going through. But as long as you're working through that three step test in your decision, I mean, I can write down, you know, a couple of sentences or words there. You know, and and whether or not there's any conditions, that's what this portion is for, whatever conditions you put on. And then right at the end of the meeting, I can have you just sign the back of this thing. So if that's all right with you, I'd like to start doing that. Like I said, I can, I'll fill out the information, you just sign it at the end. And then the last one here, and I'll pass these out, just you guys have copies of them. And I, for whatever reason, we started getting away from it and we'll try to get back to it. The other one is, so the decision that this board made for the Miller case. Was appealed to circuit court. There was an agreement between. Who the county had to hire as legal counsel to represent the county. Because ultimately, the board of appeals being as an entity of the county was getting sued. We hired TJ Duffy to represent. The county on that, so him and Elf Severson had discussion as opposed to waiting. The judges' time and taxpayer dollars, they're wanting to remand the decision back to this board. I have a draft version of that language. It has not been signed yet. But I do believe the chairman has been in discussion with TJ Duffy, our legal counsel. Ultimately, it's up to this committee or this board and the chairman as to. Do we not take this to court and remand the decision back now to review the case or go to circuit court? And ultimately, probably the judge still remands it back. So that is where Alf and TJ were in discussions that. They would remand it back and not waste taxpayer dollars and the judges' time if ultimately the judge is still going to remand this back. So to look at the specific three step test. Now, that's not necessarily saying that you need to change the ultimate decision. But you got correct.
So if it gets remanded back to us, do we hear the whole case again or do we just do the three step test?
That I do not know. I would default to.
Because I acknowledge I didn't, I did do the three step test. And I didn't do a very good job of finding the fact, so this kind of lends lends in my lap why it's coming back to us, but. I did make the motion, so. But but I didn't follow, didn't do it properly. You know, they said that. My will and not my judgment, I disagree with that and that my decision or my motion was.
Arbitrary and capricious. That's what they say in every appeal.
I didn't agree with that either. Legalese, so yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with it coming back, but I I guess if if we are gonna hear the whole case again. We should know that. As quickly as possible so that we can at least re- review our 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 fi- our our folder and our and our.
Right, and I'll talk to TJ. There's a chance I can still get this on November, but I have to get it out tomorrow.
Question before you.
So I guess I would talk to TJ on whether or not we want to push this to November or push it back till December.
Can can they? And they have, this has to be approved by a judge, I'm assuming.
Correct.
So when that gets done, I don't know, but can the two lawyers? Get together and remand it back with directions?
So there, I mean, there's language specified in here.
That they're comfortable, which is what the judge would have done.
When they talk about that the board failed to follow and apply the legal standards required of Wisconsin State statutes fifty nine sixty nine four sub seven sub C sub two. The Sawyer County Shoreline Wetland Protection Order in section thirteen point four and the rules and bylaws of the Sawyer County Board of Appeals itself. Now, for in the interest of judicial economy and to prevent unnecessary expenditures of attorney fees and litigation costs. It is hereby stipulated by and between parties thereof, the representative counsel and the board of decisions, the variant case twenty one dash zero zero five. Is remanded back to the board for reconsideration at the board's next meeting. With a decision issued based on legal standards required of Wisconsin fifty nine sixty nine seven C two and the applicable. Sorry, County zoning. Very arbitrary and capricious directions.
Hear from all three again or just two sides and we're just hearing from Cola and we're hearing. From Duffy or we are hearing from the applicant.
Well, and that that would be something I would end up asking asking TJ. I mean, he's the one that passed the bar. I didn't, so.
So if it's reconsideration, I have to look that up. See what it actually means in legalese that it's rehearing the whole case or just looking at our decision like a judge would.
Yeah, I'll get that answered and I will email the group.
Yep, all right. Anything else before the board? Thank you, Laura.